All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, public comment. We have Danielle Jackson. If you would come up to the podium, please. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Jackson and my family has been a member of the Peru School community for over 17 years. I am the parent of three Peru students. My daughter Kaylee is graduating from St. Michael's College next year, and she was a three-sport athlete at Peru. My middle son Tristan will be attending his second year in the AutoTech program at C V Tech, where he has found motivation, inspiration, and significantly improved his in-school behavior, grades, and overall well-being. My youngest son Dylan has had this career path opportunity revoked along with 34 other students. I attended a workshop the other day here at Peru on how to take care of a teacher's mental health. They said all superheroes have a cause they fight for, and today I am fighting for my son and the 34 other kids who lost their seat at C V Tech. Demand for C T E pathways has increased significantly and for good reason. Research strongly supports that career and technical education improves attendance, discipline, and graduation rates. The marketing that C V Tech did in partnership with our local district was amazing and it worked. Peru's decision that has been made to revoke these student seats will have long-lasting and devastating effects on all of these students, their families, and our community. Peru stated in a letter they sent last Friday with only less than 20 days remaining in high school that it was brought to their attention that the programs have limited space for the next school year. The truth is that C V Tech never said limited space. They said to have serious conversations with students and develop a backup plan for their program choices. They should have a first, second, and third choice of programs and realize everyone may not get their first choice. But all of these students had a seat at C V Tech. Now, they've changed the rules and criteria all the way back to their ninth grade year as they were merely emerging from their COVID cocoons. This is like changing the rules in the fourth quarter of a game. Students that had too many absences, failing grades, and suspensions were put into a formula, and students that scored too high were no longer to be permitted to stay on their graduation pathway that they'd been planning, not to mention the double jeopardy this poses as they've already done the time for their crime. We allow a fresh start for dances. I think we should do the same for our C V Tech students. I also would like to point out that there is overwhelming evidence that using punitive measures to address discipline, attendance, and poor grades is absolutely not effective. The 35 Peru Central School District students that were given a seat at C V Tech at the table and then removed before dinner was even served should be treated no differently than students who play basketball, football, lacrosse, flag football, drama, and all the extracurricular activities you nicely offer. There is no rubric for being able to participate in these, however. Once you are accepted, you are expected to meet criteria and maintain good grades and attendance. If after acceptance, students do not maintain the expected standards, they receive tiered interventions and supports. If after that, they do not meet them, they could be removed from these activities. These 35 students deserve the same opportunity to prove themselves worthy before having the door slammed in their faces. These kids are all looking forward to new opportunities and experiences and no longer to feel like a square peg in a round hole. Remember, they were enrolled and removed. The vast majority of students will succeed and graduate to build your houses, fix your cars, color your hair, prepare and serve your food, open daycare centers, service you, law enforcement, environmental conservation, as well as heavy equipment operators, aircraft managers, electricians, care for your animals, and become essential healthcare workers. We all know how integral these positions are in improving our community and making our young people employable. Please reconsider removing these students from their chosen career and graduation pathways and allow them the opportunity to be successful and productive members of the Peru community. This decision will not impact the taxpayer burden because of the fact that they have five-year rolling enrollment averaging. I encourage you to research that concept. It allows for data-driven arguments for program expansions. It identifies high-demand areas. It allows component districts to pull resources and expertise to expand program offerings, and it makes the most of fixed costs and gives you all a better bang for your buck.
Thank you. Your time is up, I'm sorry.
Oh, you won't let me read the last paragraph?
No, because we do try to limit, and I've given you four minutes rather than three.
All right, well, thank you for your time, and I hope all we've heard is put into practice after this.
Thank you. And the next?
If you'd like to provide the call.
Yeah, you can provide us with that.
Would I email back to you? Is that how I would do that? Because I'd be more than happy.
Ms. Provost, right.
Thank you.
Okay. Diane Levine?
I am just here to support C V Tech and its programs. I've worked at C V Tech for feels like a million years. I love it so much, and I happen to know that it's true that they did have seats at C V Tech, and I know that we didn't tell Dylan when we found that out, because of course I found it out first. And then when they were pulled back, it was just like ripping our hearts out because Dylan has been planning to go to C V Tech since he was that high. Did he have bad attendance the past couple of years? Yeah, he did. And he also, Danielle wouldn't mention, but he has physical reason for that also, but he has become a changed person. He's become this young man who now he has a job. He's going out with his friends. He wasn't doing those things, and I'm just so afraid that denying him and so many others because I see what happens to these kids at C V Tech. And I know that many of you see what happens to these kids at C V Tech, so I just implore you to... And it wasn't anybody's fault. Dylan has become the new person he is in many ways because of Mr. Berry and Mr. Carter and my daughter. They worked as a team to get him to where he was, and then all of a sudden, boom, you can't go to C V Tech. It's too much for a young person who has worked so hard, you know, in his life just to get to where he is today. And I strongly do thank the team at Peru for what they did for him, and I've done that numerous times. So I'm not blaming anybody. I'm just saying people don't maybe get the depth of the purpose and the need for C V Tech, and I just thank you all for your time and hope that you'll allow these kids, or at least the majority of them, to go to C V Tech. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we don't need an executive session? What's that?
There's no more here.
No, no.
I want to take that at the beginning, we don't have two more.
Oh, I...
Just to make sure it's still working for anyone that wants to.
Okay. We're all set. We didn't have any emailing. We don't need an executive session, so a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Peters, second.
Second.
Mrs. Mitchell, all in favor? Motion carried. Next week, I am the only candidate, but there is a possibility write-ins are there too. I told my husband if Mickey Mouse beats me, that's not going to be good. And would appreciate your support for the budget. I think we've gone through and made a fair and equitable budget, and with our tax rates going down, hopefully it won't hurt people too much with the assessment increases. So thank you.
And so this is the conclusion of the budget hearing. Again, our budget vote, May 21st, 12 to noon here in the high school community room. Are there any questions from the board?
No, thank you.
I just want to say thank you for all of your work on this, Kara. I know it's not easy. You did a great job.
It is clear. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, P A T?
Two quick things. P A T would like to thank Mr. Storms and the board for the upcoming summer PD opportunities. Many of us are looking forward to our variety of offerings this summer. We're excited about that. Additionally, we'd like to thank Mr. Storms, Mrs. Pitcher Boye, Mrs. Calvres Gray, and the board for the science reading micro-potential course opportunity for all of our P A T colleagues.
Thank you. Okay, Administrator's Report?
Yep, Mr. Berry.
Do you know where the next presentation is?
Can you just scroll down?
Yep, next slide. There we go. All right. Thank you for your time tonight, everyone. It's really, to be honest with you, a proud moment for me as this is one of... I believe this to be the most important thing we do at our high school. Bottom line, hands down. And also, you know, across the state, across the nation, this thing of S E L is being talked about, social-emotional learning. And I think a lot of principals, a lot of schools are able to say, yeah, well, we have this presentation. And I'm very confident and proud of the fact that we can say, well, we have this sustainable thing that we're going to do for years. And not only is it going to be in our high school, we're going to help our middle school kids out. Not only are we going to help our middle school kids out, we hope to help out every kid in every building in this school. And we have some really brave people here to talk about their experience in this and how they grew as individuals, but most importantly, how the impact of this course and what these particular individuals have done throughout our hallways. And I'll end with this, and I want to thank Mr. Adam Carter, Ms. Jeng Day, Ms. Anna Stitt, Mr. Ethan Depot, Lucas Perez, who moved on to other things, but for taking this risk with me because it didn't sound, you know, when we first pitched it, it sounded like it was risky. But at the same time, this is something that has really come to fruition in our school, and I'm really excited for you to hear from these people tonight.
Hi, everybody. I'm Alana Travis, if you don't know me, which most of you don't. I transferred to Peru at the beginning of my junior year, so I'm still kind of new. I transferred, and I wanted to try something new. I wanted to take a leap into something that I haven't tried before. And I went into the guidance counselor, we're making my schedule, and she mentioned the Leadership and Human Studies program. Now, I had no clue what this meant, and she said, you would be great, you should definitely join. And I said, well, I'm not a leader at all. I decided to join anyway, and I realized very quickly that this program gives all kinds of students from all kinds of areas the strength and courage to try new things and to become a leader. The leadership program not only gave me this strength and courage to step out of my comfort zone, but I also saw my friends and peers expand their minds alongside me. And now I'm at the end of my senior year, and I quickly realized that this program is the best model for our students and school in so many ways. There's so many ways, there's so many things that go along with this, and the best way to start is with social-emotional learning. But my favorite part is the circles that we do. Now, circles, I know a lot of you have heard about them. It's came up in a lot of conversations, but I don't think a lot of you actually know what it means to be in a circle and have a conversation with people around you. Opening up like that, it really creates amazing relationships and connections that you don't expect to have but end up loving. So going into social-emotional learning, which is really the foundation of this program, and it's the process through which individuals learn and apply a set of social, emotional, and related skills, attitudes, behaviors, and values that help direct students. Now, that's a tongue twister. But basically, it's saying that this can help in all kinds of aspects. It can help mentally, it can help emotionally, socially, even physically. It makes you feel better about yourself. It helps with confidence and so many other things. And I think that it's an important tool for any kind of environment. It can be in a school environment, it could be in a workplace, it could be in anything in between, in colleges, and it's helpful for every type of person. And this is broken into five components. And these five components are self-management, self-awareness, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and social awareness. And I'm going to hand it over to Skylar.
Hi, I'm Skylar Smart. I am a junior here at Peru, and this is my second year in leadership. And next year, I'm very excited to be a part of the 103 class, which will be helping our future generation of leadership students by personally one-on-one mentoring them and teaching them how to be the future leaders. I just want to take a moment to apologize for maybe looking a little disheveled. I ran over here straight from a chow meat because that's how much I care about this class and how much it matters to me. But there has been a Harvard report that came through that showed that there is an 11% increase in grades being improved and overall, like, attendance of students who are a part of S E L programs. There's less students who are suicidal and have those thoughts and emotions because students feel more of a sense of community, and they feel like they belong in this school environment. Students build better relationships with each others, with each other and teachers, which is the most important part that we want to stress. Teachers also benefit from this program. It's not just focused on the students because teachers feel more satisfied with their jobs at the end of the day, and they feel like they're actually making an impact on these students. Students feel more sense of belonging because the teachers care and that they're there for them, and they're just, teachers are more, feel more effective at their jobs and like they're, yeah, making an impact in the students' lives. All right, and here comes Zoe. So I'm Zoe Snyder. I'm a senior at Peru High School, and I've been a part of this leadership program for the past two years. I would have loved to join the first year, but I don't think I had the opportunity to. And I wish I could stay the next year, but unfortunately I have to move on to college, which I plan on to attend Hudson Valley Community College, and I know that they have a leadership program there, which I will be doing by the way. And I'm going to talk about the overview of the current program that we are doing. And these pictures shown on screen here are just a few of the activities that we've completed. Like, there are circles, activators, bully drills, presentations. Again, one of them was speaking in front of all of our classmates without using full language, like, um, so, like, as we said. It was very challenging, and it got us all out of our comfort zones and allowed us to be able to develop those better communication skills. We've also done different activities, like describing a background story from just a random image that we were given, which was also hard. And we've also, we were assigned, we also were assigned to research unfamiliar topics and present them to our classmates. Another one was the Hope Series created by the Sweethearts and Heroes, and it was where we watched all these videos and helped the middle schoolers transition better from middle school to high school. My favorite one, like Alana mentioned, was the circles because it allows us to connect to our classmates and elementary students on deeper levels. And lastly was the bully drills, which was also really fun. We were running to the middle school, I mean, the elementary school building, and we created little skits with the elementary students on how to stand up for themselves and their peers against bullying. Now, on to Destiny. Now, for the better sister. I'm Destiny Snyder. I'm a senior, like Zoe. And next year, I plan to attend SUNY Plattsburgh and major in, actually, it's kind of similar to what we do here, it's social works, and I'm very excited for that. And it's going to be weird being so far away from Zoe. And also, Plattsburgh actually does have a leadership program as well. Some, like, high school students actually came here the other day, if I'm correct. Then, like Zoe was saying, the bully drills, those were actually a lot of fun. And this is actually a quote from one of the elementary fifth-grade teachers, which actually just proves that they work for the elementary students. So similar to what we do in elementary, the middle school actually, they created a Braves Junior program after seeing all the progress that we've created in our leadership and human studies class. So this is all the progress that we made and the development that has gone through. So we started out with one class three years ago, and then now we have five classes, and we plan to have seven classes in the future. And just a little bit more background about the Leadership and Human Studies class. They teach you, like Zoe was saying, communication skills that can carry on into the real world and the workforce and college and all of that. And honestly, without this class, I wouldn't even be up here right now in front of all of you guys. So I really am so thankful for this class and the opportunity. And now, here's Morgan Bejar.
Hi. Before I start, I would just like to thank Ms. Gay, Mr. Berry, and Mr. Carter because we would not be here without them, so thank you, guys. My name is Morgan Bejar, and I'm a senior here at Peru High School. I will be continuing my education next year at the University of Delaware, and I've been in the leadership program for two years now. While many find school to be a negative and challenging environment, I have found it to be a place of growth and support. My time in school has been quite different from what most people experience. Throughout high school, I struggled deeply with my mental health. I dreaded going to school and absolutely no one knew what I was going through. However, everything changed when I joined the leadership program. This program not only transformed my high school experience, but it also transformed me as a person. The sense of community and understanding I found in the leadership room was unlike anything I had ever experienced before. I was able to share my struggles and connect with others who were going through similar challenges. For the first time in a long time, I felt like I wasn't alone. Throughout the leadership program, I not only developed important skills for the real world, but I also formed lasting friendships and meaningful relationships with my teachers in a way I never had before. I learned more than just a curriculum, but how to be a good person. I now look forward to coming to school every day specifically for my leadership class. Being a part of something bigger than myself has been incredibly rewarding. I'm proud of the person I have become, and I credit the leadership program for helping me grow and thrive. While I exemplify the true effects of leadership, I am also here to emphasize the significance of social-emotional learning in educational settings. Social and emotional learning not only allows students to connect with one another but gain multiple important life skills while in the classroom. Studies have proven that social-emotional learning benefits and increases mental health, relationship, empathy, decision-making, self-management, and overall decreases stress. The impact of social-emotional learning goes beyond the classroom, and the impact it makes is obvious in our school community. Students are not only more outgoing but feel more comfortable and supported throughout the school. Within the leadership program, we have all demonstrated significant growth in multiple aspects of our lives. We have done countless circles within our classroom and student body. We've also worked with the younger generation and taught them the importance of standing up to bullies and how to navigate that kind of scenario. The work we have done not only on ourselves but also within the student body is drastically changing the environment of our school and well-being of students for the better. Students are continuously joining leadership program, and the program continues to grow over the years. Even Mr. Berry has stated, leadership is the only thing I have ever seen work in the realm of social-emotional learning. It's a one-and-done thing. Research shows that social-emotional learning not only improves achievement by an average of 11 percentile points but also increases pro-social behaviors. The significance of this program is immense, and the results have been clearly drastic. This program is here to stay. On behalf of the leadership students, we appreciate your time in learning about the significant program that has changed all of our lives for the better. Thank you.
You guys like to say, hey, I want to put you on the spot. Do you want me to go first because you're going to cry? She's the emotional one, I'm the goofball. So I'm Adam Carter. I'm a high school counselor. I've done this for 16 years now, being a counselor. And last year, I said to Mr. Berry, can I have the opportunity to be part of this program more? And he's like, absolutely. So fortunately, I've been lucky to co-teach a class with Jen for two periods this year, one leadership level one, and then this wonderful group of leadership two. And since I've been here, and with my gray hairs, and I've been here for 16 years, I've been through a bunch of different programs. And honestly, this isn't up here just promoting. I truly, truly believe this is a program that is amazing and truly, I hope it doesn't go anywhere, and I hope it continues to grow and spread through the middle school and down to the elementary. What they're doing, I would never have the courage to do at that age. So they've come so far. I'm so lucky to work with you. I've learned so much from all of you. So thank you for letting us present. I hope you really understand what this program means to the school and the benefits that it really has.
And I am not going to be as eloquent as Mr. Carter. This is my baby. These kids are my kids. I don't have my own children, and so these students, everything that they give to me every day is just, it's so fulfilling, and I've learned so much from them, and I hope they've learned something from me. I really do believe in this program. I believe that this makes a positive school environment. I believe in the power of students. Our students have power. Our students have a voice, and this is where they get to show their voice. So I appreciate it very much that you've listened to tonight's presentation, and even though I can't keep them all, we're not going to lose touch. And some of you may know I'm transitioning next year. I will not be in the classroom. I will be working with Sweethearts and Heroes to try to further this message to other districts as long, and I'm going to stay here for two days a week because I can't get away. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll end with this, like, when you go through anything that you do in a school that you're with an outside partner, picking the right partners is 100% the thing that matters. Our choice of Sweethearts and Heroes is 100% the correct choice, in my opinion, and we want to continue to work with them, and they are ready to work with us. And I'll leave with this. So when you come to graduation, if you see our students with this on their, around their neck, this cord, this means that they have done, they have met the criteria of the program for X number of circles, X number of bully drills, they've done seminars, they've gone out and circled with students in the high school, middle school, and they have to meet that criteria. So that's a small token of appreciation for a really big sacrifice that they've all made. Thank you all.
Thank you. It's amazing. I know I've only had the opportunity to go into one circle last year, and then I think the end of the month, we're going to have a luncheon where we'll see a little bit of the circles and so on. So I hope some of the board members can go to that, too. Very important, very important piece, and I'm with Mr. Carter. At that age, I wouldn't have been up there doing what they're doing. So thank you so much, and we certainly appreciate all of your experience and expertise and passing that on to the younger kids, too. So thank you. Okay, and thank you. You do not have to... You do not have to stay for the next hour, okay? Okay. We move on to Consent Agenda, Reports and Communications. Are there any questions on A through F? Okay, motion to approve A through F?
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Oh, I thought you said just a second.
No.
Second, second, second. Mr. Peters, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Okay, Consent Agenda, New Business. Should I put that, the two things, in here or?
We'll put them all at the end.
At the end?
Regulate the business.
Oh, right, right. Okay, we have New Business, A through G. Are there questions? Okay, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell, second. Mrs. Stephanie Boswell-Davies, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Okay, now we're on to eight. And we've got quite a few of those. Old Business. And we will look at these. What's that? Did I skip? Oh, I skipped A through G, seven.
She's excited.
Yeah, seven, A through G. Any questions?
A through H?
Is it H now?
G.
G, it was G, right? Yeah. Any questions? Motion? Mrs. Mr. Hamilton, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, now, Old Business. And we've got to look at those individually, right? First one, the policy, second reading of the policy of field trips and excursions. Any questions? Motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell, second. Mrs. Stephanie Boswell-Davies, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. B, our shared services agreement with Serenac. Any questions? Okay, motion, Mrs. Graves?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Mitchell, all in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed? Motion carried. Academic calendar.
I'm sorry. The, I don't remember, but was that high school, elementary, what was it? Do you know?
Sorry. Special ed student from Serenac is what?
Middle school.
Middle school. The academic calendar, I couldn't get that on Board Docs, but it was just all of our different dates.
Just the different changes that we had to make.
Yeah.
This is really the final final?
The final countdown, okay. Are there any questions on that academic calendar?
You sure it's the final final?
It is. We're never bringing it back, I promise.
Never say never. Never say never. Have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Peters, second. Stephanie Boswell-Davies, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, no one opposed. Our capital projects proposal.
Yes, so we...
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I mean, we just got that little, we got that little spreadsheet, but didn't see...
all the roofs that we're talking about. So, this particular project is associated with roofs in general. So, we did bring together the construction committee after our meeting we had in April and had a conversation about this and talked about where we really feel we need to be taking this next building project, too. And it's really taking a look at all the different roofs that we have and really going across, you know, pushing it out and getting as many roofs as we possibly can, either recoded or resurfaced, one or the other. So, those are the, that was really the situation that we're talking about. Do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, really, in this part of the planning process, it's having the board agree to a scope of a project, which, you know, the proposal is of roofs. We're the smaller project with the expectation of a larger one in that 2029 to 2032 threshold when our debt falls off. But with our capital reserve that we've established and funded, we're at 750,000 right now. I expect that we will be able to move to a million in the capital reserve before the end of this school year. So, that scenario situation was to show you what the budget could look like. So, then, once the board determines the scope or the purpose of the project, then we would go down, figure out what exactly can be accomplished in that budget.
Okay.
So, just so the board is aware, the last bill, the last time we worked on roofs, we did a resurface, and we're able to resurface the primary gym. And if you do get a chance to look at the photographs that where people were having problems getting into, the aerial shot of the elementary school shows white roofs, and that's a coating that actually goes over the roof. But we do have to work with our contractor to determine, and architect to determine, are we at a place where we can just recoat, or do we have to replace the roof? So, those are situations they'll be looking into as we move through this particular building project. And if the board is in agreement with the particular scope, then we'll be talking about when we'll be going out for a vote on that with our community as well.
Okay, any questions? Or a motion to move ahead for, do we want the December, do you want us to have the vote, or just?
We won't decide the vote yet, just that you're agreeing on.
Agreeing, it's going to, roofing projects are a priority. Okay, so, any other questions?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Mr. Peters, motion, second. Mrs. Mitchell, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion, anyone opposed? Motion carried.
I will also send those pictures back out to the board in a regular email. I don't know why.
They came up.
Oh, they did?
They came up later on this afternoon.
Okay.
They weren't working this morning, but they were.
Yeah, Board Docs was having lots of issues. Okay, our New Business, and again, we have to look at each of these. The first one is on the NISBA Annual Business Meeting, and I believe Eddie has always, has volunteered to do that. We got a resolution kit. I don't know if anybody had anything on the resolutions. I did contact NISBA, I asked them, you know, some of the ones that are sunsetting in 2019, and he said, if you look at those, most of those are things that are generally happen. I was concerned about one, about making sure that we were notified by courts of restraining orders, and he said that they're going for legislation in that. So, I'm not so sure there's any that we really need to push through with that sunsetting like we did last year. I don't know if anybody else saw anything that they would like to present?
So, this, we will choose a delegate later, but this is to see anything in that whole kit, if you wanted to submit any resolutions by law, amendments, any of those, or if you felt that you needed to submit one of these sunsettings individually. If you don't feel the need to, that's fine, you would just do the resolutions, I can't reenact it. Not submitting.
Right, yeah, yeah. As I said, I did contact them, and they said most of those are kind of general ones that have, since 2019 have become, if you look at them, they've really become policies, protocols, and so on. So, and the one that I was concerned about, the courts notifying us, he said that they're asking for legislation on that. So, at this point, do we have any that we think that we need to do some rationale for? No? Okay, so we make a motion, the board is not, at this point, not submitting anything, and next month, we'll make sure we have the delegate. Okay? So, have a motion for board not submitting anything at this point?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Peters, second. Mrs. Graves, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, the election survey, any questions, remarks on that?
Nothing, I took out with anything in regard to the mascot, we moved on from our mascot conversations.
Yeah, and I like the one page, you know, it looked good when it was re-formatted and so on.
And we'll also have it available on iPads for people to do as well, so we'll have it both ways.
Okay. So, we have to approve the survey, anybody, any other questions on it? Motion to approve the survey?
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hamilton, all in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed? Motion carried. Clinton County Agreement, any questions on that? That was a transportation piece, right?
Yeah.
Okay, motion to approve the Clinton County Agreement?
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Boswell-Davies, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. And then the Ni-class resolution, this is just allowing us to do that now, we hadn't been allowed to do it before.
Correct. Authorizing us to move our money to earn more.
Right.
Ni-class gives a much higher rate than many regular banks, so if we can move our reserves or our tax collection over there, we can earn more on our money.
Excellent, excellent. Any other questions? Motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hamilton, all in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed? The Auctions International Agreement, any questions on that? Just another format of doing auctions. Okay, motion to approve the, going into the contract agreement with Auctions International?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Hamilton?
Second.
Mrs. Graves, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, no one opposed. And then the MOA with PAC, any questions on that? Okay, we'll resolve that, we're going to accept that, terms and conditions of that. Motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hamilton, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. And we have two more.